We're here tonight to talk about the possibility of truck scale and truck parking out by Edgewood. That's why we're here. We have an agenda. The agenda's there, so if people want to know what the agenda is. I'm going to talk a little bit. I'm Ken Carrion, the mayor. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the history and how we got to the point where we are. And then I'm going to call on Captain Mike Dahl and Captain Monica Alexander to give their dog and pony show about their process. And there is another one, State Patrol Officer here.
Captain Ron Mead.
Captain Mead.
Mead?
Yep.
Ron Mead.
Ron Mead. Thanks for being here. So, you know, I grew up here. And in the 60s, in the 60s, the truck stop was in the middle of town. There was a little restaurant there and trucks parked across the street. There was a scale house out at about Exit 38. And there was truck parking out there as well. I can remember that very well because we used to park out at the truck stop, excuse me, at the scale house and jump over the guardrail to go down to Twin Falls and swim in the river when it was really cold. That was westbound. Actually, it was both ways. There were only two lanes at the time and then they expanded before them. But in the mid-'70s, the new truck town was built at that same area where this, where the scale house was being proposed. And when the freeway bypassed North Bend in the late '70s, they had to move. And they moved over to the north side of the freeway where they are right now. About five years ago, the city looked at the current facility and thought about the possibility of additional truck parking or additional truck town at Exit 38, excuse me, not Exit, but Exit 34, right behind, just north of where Kent's Truck Town is at right now. City Council decided at the time that they had, that we were doing enough for truck parking by having the facility we have, which is almost 200 stalls. So we pushed back to the state and said, "We need to find some other place for truck parking." We recognize that there is a need. We know there's a need. We recognize, we'll support you, but please put it someplace else. Opponents at the time painted us as being anti-truck. And I don't believe that we are. I don't believe we were then. Our decision wasn't based on the truckers, the trucking industry. Because we recognized, number one, truckers have a difficult time. It's not a high-paying job. It's not, it's being away from home a lot. They carry their food. It's just, it's a difficult way to make a living. And they're required to be off the road 10 contiguous hours out of every 24, making it even more difficult to make a living. They would prefer to drive 24 if they could. And I don't say that in jest because I know it's dangerous. But that's how they have to go to make a living in a lot of cases. Federal laws require that, the 10 contiguous hours. That's federal. But we have to be cognizant of the other issues when you have a truck facility near a residential, near a community, near city streets. And that's clean air issues, noise issues, and the infamous lemonade bottles. And I don't mean that to be funny, because it's what it is. It's true. It's an awful lot of truckers who are not real sensitive to the needs of a community. North Bend has the only truck stop in King County. The only truck parking, legal truck parking facility in King County. So we say we've already done enough. We would ask for that to be back on the state of Washington. And it is interstate commerce, a federal mandate, a statewide issue. It's a for-profit industry. We're bearing the local, bearing the impacts of all that. So we would ask the state to put it someplace else. So I'm going to call on Captain Dahl. Before I do that, I want to introduce Mark Mullett, our senator from the 5th Lieutenant District, and Mike and Monica. You want to take over? There will be an opportunity.
Yeah, please do, because we're trying to videotape this.
Let's come around this way, Mike.
Yeah, I don't want to sit over here. I feel like I'm too far away.
There will be an opportunity for public comment. But we have a council meeting that starts at 7 o'clock. So there may not be an opportunity for everybody to comment on that. If there is a need, we can have another meeting.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. My name is Mike Dahl. I've been with State Patrol for about 26 years. And currently, I'm assigned to the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Bureau. My division has 125 commercial vehicle enforcement officers in it, spread all across the state of Washington. They do compliance reviews. So if the trucking industry's not doing it right, we send our investigators in to investigate why they're not doing it right. But we also house the weigh stations in Ridgefield, Bow Hill, Clealum, Spokane, and the Tri-Cities area, Plymouth Station down there. We have a total in the state of Washington of 54 weigh stations. But the history of that, we don't use all 54 of them. We just finished a strategic plan that we worked on for about a year. And the reason that we did that is because we wanted to be able to prioritize not only where we put facilities, but what facilities we currently have that we don't need anymore. Some of the facilities you'll see as you guys drive around the state are the smaller little weigh stations. And those were put in when they were exactly that, weigh stations. And primarily, they did that. They didn't inspect trucks when those things were built. Now we inspect trucks. In fact, our state inspects about 93,000 trucks a year, just in Washington State alone. And we're down, my division's down 20% in staffing. So when we get staffed up a little, you're going to see that number climb up to over 100,000 trucks. What we're looking for is for those trucks to operate safely on the road. There's basically three main components that I have a stake in. Safety, infrastructure protection, and freight mobility. Part of my role, and it sounds a little goofy to think that the State Patrol has a role in making sure that goods get to market, but we do. That's a very important part of what we do. The truckers will tell you, "If you bought it, a truck brought it." And I agree with that. But we have to hold them to a standard. And right now, we have a hole in our fence. There's no other way to put it. We have a hole in our fence. And a big one. This area right now, trucking is going to increase probably in the next, the last estimate I saw was by 2030. So about 12 years plus, it's going to go anywhere from 40 to 60% increase in Washington State. We're growing like crazy. We have a Pacific port that has just taken on more ship traffic. And those ships are carrying 50% more containers. If you guys live in this area, you see those container trucks all the time, right? They're coming from the ports. They're going eastbound. And we don't have anything from the port of Seattle. We don't open Clealum because I can't staff it. And it's in a curve. That was a weigh station way back in the day. If we open that thing up, we could put three trucks on the ramp. We get a fourth truck. We've got to shut everything down and we're going to kill somebody. So my directive to them was close the station. We have one westbound in Clealum, but we have nothing looking at trucks going eastbound. Those trucks are heavy. 28% of the trucks that we do inspections on, we place out of service. Now, think about that. For every 100 inspections we do, when I do a 37-point inspection on that truck, 28 of those trucks don't belong on the road. And if we aren't catching them, nobody's catching them. Because the State Patrol is the number-one game in town when it comes to commercial vehicle enforcement. We have a few other agencies that we've trained over time to do that. But the reality is, we're the ones that are doing it. We have to have a facility. So I asked for a port-of-entry-sized facility, one that would be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And I want that facility east of Highway 18. Because I want to catch those guys, too. A lot of the port truck that got out of Tacoma and Seattle goes to Kent. And then it gets moved on to other trucks and then it comes over the passes. We know that. It's not a secret. We have traffic monitors. DOT has traffic monitors in the ground. And the last one I checked is about two weeks ago. And I'm not, I mean, I can do some math, but keep in mind I'm a trooper, not a mathematician. We get about, the center of the road that's near here, in fact, it's almost right where I want to put this weigh station, that mile post 33.5, has 4,500 trucks a day go over it. Now, I think there's more. That's the number that's in the right-hand lane because that's the only place with monitoring. But if you drive that road, you know they're in Lane 2 as well. We're not catching those. So add maybe another 15, 20% onto that. You're talking probably 5,000 trucks a day that are going through your community. We're not going to bring more trucks to your community. The trucks are here. They're already here. What they're doing is they're parking on the on-and-off ramps over here. And they're parking on North Bend city streets, whether you have an ordinance or not. And we know that. And they're using North Bend Way as a way to get off the freeway and drive down North Bend Way. It's not supposed to be open. It's restricted. And they're certainly not supposed to park there. And I don't want them to park there either. But here's the deal. They've got to park somewhere. In December of this year, there's going to be a significant change in the trucking industry. It happens about every four or five years, something big. And this is a big one. They're going to go away from paper logbooks. They're going to go to electronic logging devices. That means your smartphone or a tablet size is going to be mounted in the truck, wired to the truck. As soon as that guy turns the truck on, it's going to start clicking, timing. He's got 14 hours from the time he turns that truck on to finish his workday. 11 of those he can drive. The other three, he's got to be doing something else. So when he runs out of hours and he's not to his destination, he has to pull over, he's going to stop. Because that electronic logging device is going to either be connected, some of them are connected directly to their company, and their supervisor's going to call and say, "Why are you still driving? You're over hours." And he's not going to say, "Well, I can't find a place to park." He's going to pull over. So I want to put a place for him to go. You guys have a truck down here? I know a little bit about the history of that. I understand about the city ordinance and how the pass is closed. But I can put, there's two diagrams in the back there. Those are proposals. They're not, they're certainly not finished proposals. That's very preliminary in terms of what that facility's going to look like. But we could put up to 70 of them off of the freeway, off the on-and-off ramps, and put them in my facility, safe and clean. They're not going to be able to litter in my facility because there's consequences. They're not going to have illegal behavior in my facility because there's consequences. And that we will be there. This guy that's over here, you already got introduced to Monica. That's Ron Mead right there. He's a captain for us as well. This area that you're sitting in is his district. One of his lieutenants, Jeff Jacobson, is right there. One of the things that Captain Mead would like to do is bring the detachment. I started in this area, in North Bend, 26 years ago. And I remember going to the Tifft House for breaks because, for whatever reason, the guys that had 30 years on when I got here only liked to drink coffee at the Tifft House. So I've been to this area before when it was, when North Bend was little. It's not little anymore. It's a grown-up city. And it's just going to keep on getting bigger. And the more businesses you put in here, the more trucks you're going to have. And I want to monitor those guys. When those trucks have to go down your city streets, I want to make sure that guy has good brakes. And I want to make sure that guy's not overly tired, or drunk, or high. And I can't do that because I'm not here. And this is not, this issue is not about human beings. You could triple the size of my enforcement guys, and I'm not going to have enough guys to do it. But if I get a fixed facility, I can do that. Because I can staff that.
Captain, do you have a time check? Because we talked about 10 minutes or about 15, and I want to do a quick five-minute and then open it to questions. So you got any shorts? Well, actually, I've got about it. So five-minute kind of conclusion. So, Mayor told you about the history. The captain told you a little bit about why the state--
Lonnie Lindell.
Lonnie Lindell, city administrator. So Mayor Ken told you a little bit about the history. Captain told you about why the State Patrol is focused on the North Bend site. There were five sites studied by WashDOT. WashDOT was invited. They elected not to come this evening. I'm going to tell you why North Bend has a dog in this fight. So some folks have said, "North Bend is outside your city limits. Why are you even involved in this issue?" And the reason we're involved is, actually, two reasons. There is something called SEPA and NEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act and the National Environmental Policy Act. And those are two laws. One's a state law, one's a federal law. And it says, "When you build a facility, even if it's outside of your corporate limits, if it creates adverse environmental impacts, noise, air pollution, impacts on your roads, then you, city, have the ability to comment if there are going to be adverse environmental impacts." And that is the city's role in this. That is the dog we have in this fight. The city, as the mayor indicated, is not in favor of this location. There are five sites that were studied. We believe the three sites east of North Bend, not in close proximity to a single-family residential, to a school with young children, a summer school, Camp Waspin, are better locations. Now, there are some issues that have been raised, cost and also some stacking issues. We, without going into great detail, we disagree with some of the cost figures that WashDOT came up with. Sorry. Hope that's not me. So, anyway, so we unfortunately do not agree with some of the cost figures for those other options. If it is, yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you for doing that. That wasn't me. I apologize for that. Anyway, we do, we do think that there are better locations for the site. We're concerned because there is a, there's some critical areas in the site. It's, there's a well, there's a wellhead protection area. So we'd like to see further study done, both the Clealum site, and we'd also like to see further study done at Exit 38 before a decision is made. We do want to thank Senator Mullett, who has been really involved in finding financing. The reason we're having this discussion, folks, is because we do have a really significant public safety issue, which is if you've driven on I-90, you know you take your life in your own hands when you get those stacking at the interchange of I-90 and SR-18. And Senator Mullett was instrumental in getting a very significant project put on the state budget and moving it up the priority food chain to take care of that and improve that. But that does require the relocation of the weigh station. And so we don't want to be an obstacle to that very important public safety project. At the same time, as Mayor Ken indicated, we are currently hosting 200 spaces. And we're also very concerned about North Bend Way being a bypass for truckers that are overweight. There's, you know, and I know that there's infrastructure that can be put into the right of way, but that infrastructure is not currently in the budget of $17 million. So we're concerned these truckers are going to come through town if they are overweight. And those 5,000 trucks that Captain Dahl mentioned, maybe they're not coming through North Bend right now. But if they want to avoid a weigh station, they might start. And one truck, 18-wheeler, has the same impact on our streets as 10,000 single-occupant vehicles. And we're a community of 7,000 citizens. And you're paying for that infrastructure and those streets to be repaired, for a private for-profit business. And it's just not, it's not right that a small community has to make those improvements to your street. So that's all we have for the city. We don't want to interfere with an important new project. But at the same time, we have to find a better solution than right outside of the city, so close to the single-family residential. So let's open it to questions. So, let's raise, let's have a protocol. Raise your hand if you have a question. Let's keep it to two minutes because we have a lot of people. And identify who you are directing your questions to.
Bring them forward. You want to bring them forward or no?
Please stand up because we don't have a microphone. And speak clearly because we're trying to record this.
And my question is, what are the benefits for those of you affected by this change? Do you know about Beyonce? That's a middle port. What are we seeing? What's our benefit? And this imposition is going to be close by.
Yes, that's to you, Captain. What's the benefit from the relocation? The question is, what is the benefit from the relocation of the weigh station? I live out by the middle port. What's the benefit to me from this?
Biggest benefit is safety. Right now, nobody's monitoring those trucks. So when you're driving, you leave your home, and you go out onto I-90, those trucks are out there.
25 years, no problem.
Just one question is versus, not a bait.
I can't, I have to look farther into the future.
Okay.
The past, the past is the past. We have to look to the future as far as whether or not there's an issue of safety. We know that truck crashes are going up in Washington State.
The benefit is nobody says it's safe.
Sir, let's just do one question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. And I want to thank the mayor and Lonnie for bringing this forum together. Because if it hadn't been for you guys, we wouldn't be here tonight, being able to address these questions. So thank you. And my question is about why North Bend? Why, I mean, I know geographically, this is a really great place. But everybody in the region benefits from getting goods off of trucks. And we all do. And so why not spread the joy of the parking spaces? You know what I mean? I mean, you're talking about putting 70 in addition to the 200 we already have. We feel like we've already paid our price for many years. And we've suffered from it in many ways. And we want to see that cleaned up. And we want to see the rest of I-90 from Sound to the mountains pay their fair share as well. And one of the propositions, and my trucker friend isn't here tonight, and I wish she was because we kind of came up with this together, is putting smaller stations along the way, from the mountains to Sound, along Highway 18. Five to 20 spaces. You know, if you can put a bathroom in, great, with a water fountain. If not, you know, a porta potty. And let everyone share in that. And so just to ask you guys to think about that. I think the city nor most of the residents don't have any issue with a weigh station here. You guys need that, and we support that. But we've got 200 spaces. We don't need more. And we want everyone else to be able to share, you know, the burden of that opportunity.
Yeah, and glad you brought that up because throughout this entire process, I have not, maybe tonight will be the night. I haven't heard one person object to the inspection facility being put in that location, which I think is extremely encouraging. And I would be remiss if I didn't pass on, so I was talking to Chief Batiste, the attached today. And he wanted me to pass on that the Washington State Patrol is about doing public safety and doing it right. And we would be a good neighbor to you. And that's a fact. One of the things when Lonnie and mayor came down to Olympia a couple of weeks ago that I committed to, and this is why we asked Captain Mead to show up, too. There was a time when we had a detachment of troopers here in North Bend. And they were able to be instantly responsive to the needs that you guys have, okay? He would like to see that go back again. There's a lot of reasons why. Staffing was a huge part of that. We're starting to get some staffing issues taken care of. We just graduated 39 other troopers. We have an additional class. I think we're down, I think it was 85, I saw. We're down 85 spots. We're trying to run a class of 60 people. I think in the next year or two, we're going to get staffed back up, which is going to allow this captain to reallocate some of his assets from the Bellevue office and put them here. And what I told him was, "We'll build an office in our inspection facility that you can put your detachment in. So if there's an issue in the city of North Bend, you have a detachment of troopers right here."
So can you separate that from the parking? And I'll defer that to the city.
Okay, so I think I saw that fellow in the back. He has kind of, yeah, Seahawks, yeah.
Just kind of based on what you're saying with, excuse me, I'm a little, I got a little bit of a cold, but--
No worries.
With the 25% number, am I to hear that right? That would be 1,200 or trucks turned around in our town, like at that facility daily?
What do you mean? When they're out of service?
Yeah, you'd say 25--
No, but--
So it kind of confused me.
Yeah, so when a truck gets placed out of service, they're not allowed to move any further. So when they pull into our facility, we deem that they need to be inspected. We do an inspection on that vehicle, find something that's an out-of-service violation, bad brakes, driver's passed his hours, tires are bad, engine's not running right, axles are wrong, fuel leaks, something like that. We put that vehicle out of service. They stay in that, in that facility until they get repaired.
Is that 1,200 trucks?
Or towed away.
Is that what you're saying? That's 1,200 trucks?
You said 25% of all the trucks. You guys-- And then you said 5,000 trucks passing through. I might have missed something.
No, no, so--
25% of those that you pull over?
The 5,000 are what is going by on the freeway, okay? So the way it works is we'll put, we'll put some infrastructure out on I-90. There'll be a license plate reader, a camera to give us lifetime image of the vehicle. There's plates in the road. They're about this wide and they're the width of the lane. Trucks drive over that, and it gives us a weight on that vehicle, on each axle and an overall weight on that vehicle. We can check their operating authority. We can check the carrier's authority, all at freeway speed. Trucks that are not needing to stop, because every time a truck stops in one of our facilities, it's $10. That's $10 added on to the cost of whatever that guy's delivering, his time, his fuel, et cetera. When they go over that thing at freeway speed, a lot of those trucks are going to be told, "Keep going. Bypass the scale." Some of those trucks are going to be told, "Pull in." Of the group that gets pulled in, we're going to pull a percentage of those out to do an inspection on. Sometimes we just want to weigh them.
So Captain, what is 25% of those that you pull in per day that will be asked to spend the night? That was the question. Is that, what is the number that will be asked to spend the night?
Statewide, the entire year, we're right around 9,000 trucks. So statewide, every year, 9,000.
How is that equate to the 5,000 going down I-90?
Well, I don't know yet because I don't know how many trucks we're going to catch here that are actually-- If we put a facility here, initially, you're going to see quite a few trucks being placed out of service. And then they're going to get used to it. Because what happens in the trucking industry, I know there's truck guys in here. When you guys, when we start showing up in an area, what do you do? One of two things. You guys get better at it, or you try to go around us. And I have a solution for North Bend Way, too. So if anybody wants to go, "What is there about North Bend Way?", ask me. I'll tell you. You want me to hit the song, or do you?
Yeah, hi. I'm, this between BioMar, River's 32 and 34, just off of North Bend Way. So already pretty close to the highway, but on the north side. So I have a lot of concerns about both the weigh station as well as the truck parking. We're concerned there would be more light pollution, noise pollution, environmental. And we're trying to get rid of a congestion at Highway 18 where the weigh station is. We're growing in North Bend. And I feel like you're just moving it, and we're going to have that congestion all over again. We're going to have backups past Exit 32. We're going to, we're not going to be able to get to our exit. We exit off of 32. It's just going to be a ton of congestion right near a town that's growing. And I feel like it would be much better at 38 or farther down where you're not dealing with a city right near where you want to put your facility. There's a lot of activity on and off the highway.
Yeah. Roberta?
Hi, I'm Roberta McFarland, and I'm the director of, and I'll correct you, an outdoor school that runs 12 months of the year and has summer camps. And we have over 4,000 school students that come from September through June. And then we have another about 12,000 student, or campers, that are there during the summer. That is our water well. That is--
Say the name of your town.
Excuse me? It's Waspin. Waspin's outdoor school owned and operated by the Highline School District for 70 years. And it's been there and part of the community. It was a CCC camp ahead of that. That is option two. Our water well, our waterhead is right there. And between everything everyone said, it just does not make sense to put it where an established facility that has done so much for not only the community, but the whole Puget Sound and state, it's, we're nationally recognized. It would be a huge inconvenience, disruption, environmental concern, hazard. And we're talking 6,000 young people are there throughout the year, 250 at a time. So I want to state officially and personally that that is a very core place for our community and the organizations that live here, work here, and enjoy here.
Hi, my name's Tilman Crowe. I'm with the owner, operator, independent drivers association. I've lived in Washington State now for over 30 years, been a truck driver. For over 25 years, I have over 2.5 million safe, accident-free miles. I'm a part of this because this is where I started driving trucks, over this highway right out in front of me. And there's a lot of, a lot of talk going around. We have a lot of issues to address. First of all, the integrity of truck drivers seems to be very well, very much in, in these discussions. Some idea that we bring trash, we bring noise, we bring a lot of nefarious characters to town. Do I look like I bring those people? Do I, do I look like one of those people? My truck has the best safety rating you can possibly have. I have a number-one rating. I'm a single truck owner, operator. I'm the kind of guy that gets to go by his scales when the way of motion is working properly because they know they don't need to stop me. So the guys that he pulls in and inspects is a skewed percentage of what we are. So if you picture 12 to 25% of the trucks being stopped as, as out of service, bad, whatever, it's a misrepresentation of who we are. Now, that being said, I'll move on. I'll try to be thorough. The, we do have a lot of options for what we can do. If we'll work on it, if we'll work and put our minds together for a solution, if we, if we harden up our positions and say, "Not in my backyard," we're never going to be happy with what we come up with. Now, as a truck driver, I agree, you guys shouldn't be overrun with trucks. But I also agree that these days, there are about the trucks in the truck stop, about 75% of them are pollution-free trucks. You don't have the issue with pollution. So when you start to make the arguments, they can make, make sure they're well-founded and not just in bias. I think as far as truck parking goes, the area up there at the 25-- I think as far as truck parking goes, the area up there at the twenty-five mile marker, there's a huge area there in the median that could be developed, almost a mile long, that could be developed. As far as putting a weigh station at thirty-four mile marker, as a very seasoned, experienced truck driver, I think that is probably the best place you could possibly put it. Because you go further, you run into geographic barriers, so on and so forth of that nature. These guys have a job to do, we have a job to do, and you guys have a job to do. But the things that feeds your community are people like me. So don't ask me for my goods and then rush me out of town without caring about whether I can eat, sleep, or use the restroom. And we talk about lemonade bombs. Why is that? What facilities have we put in place for truckers to use? What have we done for waste disposal? What have we done to say, not in my backyard? And as far as it goes with going around the North Bend Way to bypass, I think these guys have a plan for that. That shouldn't be a concern. So as far as my input goes, let's all, let's all back off the trigger a little bit and let's work together to solve this, but let's do away with the absolutes and entertain everybody's problems.
Captain, don't you speak to that.
Yeah, there's a.
We're not going to have clav, we're not going to have clav.
So there's a, a couple of things I want to address, your perspective, I was in, I'm an alum of Waschewitz, by the way.
So am I. I went there, they're both schools.
Senior year, I was elected vice president of my school, so I had to go there for a week in the Boston, to speak of it firmly. Actually, when I was at that facility, I drove down in there just to reminisce. Hopefully, I wasn't trespassing because I was on duty at the time. I know, right? Bob, where Bob, you come on, we're getting. You touched on it briefly, you sort of mentioned it, there are, there are things now called auxiliary power units, okay, on trucks, pretty small. We, on the federal level, they gave an exception to the amount of weight that a truck can have if they had an auxiliary power unit. They're allowed to have a four-hundred-pound unit on there. There's several different models out there, some of them are batteries, so as a truck's driving down the road, it's charging it up, some of them are operated by diesel, hooking the gas thing. Basically, to boil it all down to bottom line, they don't have to sit and idle their truck all night long, punching that black stuff out in the air and making noise, so you don't have seventy trucks making all kinds of noise and all lit up. They turn the APU on and the guy in there can, like he said, we'll put a bathroom in our facility, okay? You'll have us in the facility to keep it safe, so we'll eliminate some of that. But the noise and the light and all that stuff that you're talking about and the geograph, or the, all the black smoke spewing out, we, they already reduce that. Now, they're doing it partly because of federal mandates, they don't want them punching that exhaust in the air, they're doing it partly because it saves them money. You run that truck all night long, two things. First of all, it's a diesel, so it goes by hours on when you need to get it serviced, right? Right? And there is no, I got to this many hours, but it seems to be running fine. You take that thing in when it gets to its hour. He's running it all night long, it's wearing the truck out and it's wasting gas, gas.
Four bucks an hour.
Yeah, four bucks an hour, he says, right there. And that's money, in his case, that's money out of his pocket. Who's your wife? Is your wife here?
She's right here.
That's money out of her pocket. Your pocket, that's to be real. Who knows the books? Right? So we have a plan for that. We've also explored the possibility of two different types of technology. Number one is electric technology. So you, anybody owns a motor home or a camper, you can plug your camper, motor home in and get power that way, trucks have that too. In my mind, the APU makes more sense. The other thing we, we wanted potentially to look at is getting a federal grant to determine how many, or to let people know how many parking stalls are available. So when a truck comes into our facility, they pass underneath a gantry that says that's one less parking stall available in that location. On the other end, when they leave, they pass under a gantry, it says there's a parking stall available. On your smartphone, on their ELD, in their cab, they can say, hey, there's, I got twenty minutes to stop. Remember I told you about the electronic logbook? In twenty minutes, I got fifteen minutes from here is a location and there's spaces available and I'm going to go safely park in that location. Buddy of mine from Miami that does this job for the Florida Highway Patrol, got a ten million dollar federal grant to install that. I'll be looking for that money too.
Let's get some more questions too. Okay, Sherwood.
My name's Sherwood, of course, I've been in Valley here for twenty-one years.
Pick up a little bit, Sherwood, we can't there yet.
I've been, I've been here for twenty-one years in the same place, out at exit thirty-four and I appreciate what you say. I've got more property than a lot, people get here and then there's a few that don't. So we got to pay attention to that few that don't so he can keep his A-rate and, and it doesn't get painted by the brush that, that ends up with those guys are getting D's and E's. So, couple things. One, yesterday was kind of interesting. Jessica Lee at the Seattle Times, Loveville, Section B, she said after I found the surfacing project, how long until the next space left? And this is about asphalt and why we spend so much money on asphalt. Now, I, after twenty-two years of driving that same road, there's a difference between the way to my car or even the way of a pickup truck and the way to the full load. So I think we have to pay attention to that because there's sixty-seven hundred and ninety-two citizens in here and the ones that pay the tax are paying for the degradation on, on our roads inside of this city and it's, and it's expensive, it's costing us money. It's not to say I don't like the products you bring, it's to say it costs us money, more money than if we had have flown in by drone. The point I want to make is that I looked at your, this, this exit thirty-two and did the metrics on it. You got to bypass, if, if somebody wants to jump off of twenty-seven and jump back on at thirty-four, you got to have a man ready to chase them down. So right off the bat, I think you're put, you're putting yourself into a Rubik's Cube that isn't going to stop the guys that are going to try to bypass you regardless of where you go. So it doesn't make sense. The suck just doesn't make sense.
Well, we have that issue in other places too. Right now, we have, in, on I-90 in Spokane, we have a facility very similar to the one we want to build here. And we have a known bypass route, State Route two ninety comes in out of Idaho. If you take the exit, an exit two in Idaho and you go north and then you head west on two ninety, you can bypass my scale. So what we did was we put a virtual way in motion station out there, put a license plate reader, camera, vendor plates in the road, first two trucks, it went over a hundred and forty-nine thousand pounds, a hundred and forty-five thousand pounds. Nice big fat tickets for those guys. We're catching those guys now. We did the same thing at the Vantage Bridge. Did the same thing at the Vantage Bridge.
Captain, in fairness, that, that in-motion weight is not in that budget right now, seventeen point nine.
Right, but here's the thing, it only costs two, it only costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that and even if it's not in the, in the budget for that bill, we have funded the other three and we'll fund these, that one on North Bend Way if we have to.
Okay. Then are there questions or?
It's like you say, if one of us eighteen winners pays five hundred and fifty dollars every August, a heavy road tax used to drive on these roads, also pay the state approximately fifteen hundred dollars tonnage to drive. We pay for these roads too.
Sadly, sir, you paid the state.
You have to get your money out of, or you pay the state.
We don't get any.
You don't get any.
Well, that's, we're paying it if you're not giving it.
Yeah, we've been telling the state you want it.
We're paying.
I did two hundred thousand dollars. We're the only city in the entire state that got the hundred thousand dollars. We're the only city.
I'm Brian Bull. I just wanted to ask, can we talk, speak a little bit to the, maybe the logistic or the personnel or some of the, the operational issues against moving it further east?
Yeah.
There's to be some agreement that, boy, if we could move it further east, that would be great for everybody. Is it not?
Not great for me. To be honest with you, it's, it's the Clealum scale, the one over in the east side, that's a, that's a non-charge.
I think you meant exit thirty-eight.
Yeah, I just meant further up the pass.
Oh, he said east, so let me just, I'll just cover them all. Clealum, I can't, I don't have enough people in my westbound one, for whatever reason, people don't want to live there, I can't staff that, so that's out. Mile close, the farther out you go, the farther away from civilization that you go, the harder it is for us to get guys to commit to move close enough, because we have restrictions in the state patrol on how many miles you have to live from the area that you work. I have to live within thirty-five miles of my office because I'm in the office, so I have to live within that, that restriction. The guys that are going to be staffing this are going to, are, can live seventy-five miles away, but right now, we're asking them to drive their personal vehicle, a hundred and fifty miles a day to come here. So I've already got some, I'm going to have to come up with a different strategy. And one of the things we did in our Plymouth facility over in Tri-City is to get around that exact same issue, was we allow them to drive our patrol car, part of that on duty. We're going to have to do the same thing here, but the farther east you go, the less likely I am to have people come and staff it. This is a great location for a lot of reasons.
It's four miles.
Yeah, but it's four miles, one way, eight miles total, times four days a week, over and over and over.
Sir, I can touch to why you don't move this to thirty-eight, it's four miles. Do you know what happens in that four miles?
There's an elevation change.
So not only do I have the honor of being owner, operator, like a number of other people here, which I have done for the last eighteen years, I also work for the Washington State Department of Transportation and I keep that pass open to help some other fellows in the winter. And that's why you don't move trucks up there. These guys can't inspect the trucks and can't keep it safe. And that's the thing you want them safe for, going up and down that hill. And another reason for more parking here is because, you're right, what they do is they stack on the sides of the freeway. We can't keep it clean. We can't keep the skiers going and, and we all know that's important. Lonnie told me last time I spoke here that, that the trucks don't fit the outdoor recreation image that North Bend wants, right? So I want to make sure we can get them up and down and it's, it's hard. These guys need a place to be able to do their job. And, and I'm glad to hear that you changed your tune because about forty minutes ago, you told me trucks don't do things for North Bend, that you don't need trucks to bring things here. And I'm glad to hear that you said that something different.
Sir, no, we're not going to have to beat amongst one another.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll say it to everybody then. Trucks brought everything that you've got and, and I know it's a cliche, I don't even do that. I've never been an over-the-road truck driver and I don't care to, to be honest with you, but I respect those guys for doing a job that nobody else is doing right now and for bringing us all the stuff we need. And if you don't want the trucks, don't buy the groceries, don't buy the clothes, stay off the roads, don't buy the vehicles.
Thank you. You've been waiting. One thing I want to comment is, we recognize a public safety issue. Our ordinance does allow trucks to park on our streets during a snow event because of public safety, so truckers are allowed to park on our street. First, you, and then, yeah, so first you, yeah.
Dr. Seaton Topf, I live in North Bend Way. I think the issue is not wanting trucks for what we get, I think the issue is we are bearing the entire load for, for whatever else Puget Sound gets delivered from trucks. That's the issue. That's the first issue. The second issue is, we can, there are just too many ways to talk about this, there's no way that the state is going to be able to accommodate all the infrastructure costs that the city will bear every time a truck has to turn around on thirty-two or thirty-four. The data, Lonnie said ten thousand times the damage of a car, it's eight to ten thousand times depending on the weight of the truck. There's just, I mean, I can drive by a truck stop tonight and I'll find a truck sitting on a county road idling. I'll drive by an hour and a half later, it's sitting there, still idling. It's the idling issue that I'd like to speak to just for a second and then ask a question. I don't buy that there are pollution-free trucks. Diesel exhaust accounts for the vast majority of air pollution from commercial transit. There are over forty different carcinogens in diesel exhaust. A lot of it is because it's so fine. I've spoken with the EPA about it, both nationally and locally. My question is, if a truck, say a two thousand seven engine, when, when we really started seeing uptick in restrictions for exhaust, the truck is idling, what is the safe zone around that truck for those particulates? Is it ten feet? Is it forty feet? Is it twenty-five feet? Okay, well, that's, that's why I'm asking because trucks, I don't think anyone knows, but we know that those carcinogens exist. So just a couple of months ago, I was out at, at a truck stop, there's two hundred stalls. I couldn't grow everywhere, but I counted twenty-seven, twenty-three trucks that were idling for over an hour and I know they weren't on auxiliary power units, because one truck here, you couldn't, if it was in here, you couldn't hear anyone speak. So that, that was for about an hour, I drove out on the roads, there's trucks idling on the county roads, there were eighteen trucks idling on the exits. You bring in seventy trucks or thirty-five trucks, I know you're going to be diligent about what you need to do, but if those trucks are idling, there is no way that anyone can tell us what we're putting into the water, what we're putting into the air and how far away we have to be from that to, to just be in a moderate risk zone. In the wintertime, the winds blow from the southeast over our neighborhoods, over our schools and over the city. In the summertime, it blows this way over Camp Waschewitz. So there are, there are less expensive now air, air monitors that the EPA is looking at in Bellevue, they got them last October. We need to get those things, we need to put those things out for a year to find out just what happens with the air pollutants, just from the diesel exhaust, let alone the infrastructure. So that's my comment and that's my question.
Turn back to me.
I'm a church, City of North Bend resident, I own a trucking company locally as well. Actually, the last ticket I got was for Trooper Davis. I thought I'd go over the past and not change because I was a local and.
You know better than that.
I don't disagree with the fact that we need more parking, that's, I mean, a root of the problem, but I'm more concerned with the state patrol's allocation of money for what, actually putting a station in on an eastbound traffic flow because, because of our location, Seattle, everything's coming west into Seattle. They've come through three check stations, whether they're coming from Oregon, Idaho, and then they really go way around Clayville unless it's golf course roads. So that's where you want all of your safety inspections going on, is at one of those inspection shops. Majority of the trucks that are coming into Seattle, they come in, empty out and I would, I would venture to bet fifty percent of them that are going back are going over into. So I, I can't justify in my own mind how you guys are spending money correctly by putting a inspection station, like location when everything's coming west, it's loaded, whether they're coming from in-state or out-of-state, but, you know, so how do you, I just want to know how you guys came up with that idea?
Well, I didn't come up with it. I can speak to that a little bit.
So when we replaced the interchange in Snoqualmie with Highway eighteen, that's a hundred and fifty million dollar project and a big chunk of that hundred and fifty million dollars was going to put a flyover to that weigh station because when you redid that interchange, you couldn't just isolate the weigh station, you just needed an access point to it. And the reality was, you're spending all this money now on the interchange, you weren't widening Highway eighteen. What we realized is if we moved the weigh station out of there, you cut the cost of that project by a lot. And now you can move the weigh station, you can replace the interchange and you can widen Highway eighteen, so it's four lanes, not the whole way down into Squaw Hobart, but you can definitely get four lanes for the first, like, you know, down to Raging River, you know, into that zone. And we think those extra four lanes is what'll get all the cars that are backed up and you're, like when I drove out here tonight at five forty-five, and they're lined up, you know, trying to head on eighteen and head south and you see the vice versa. So we hope those extra lanes at eighteen, so that's, so it's not there, the money to build this weigh station is coming out of the hundred and fifty million dollar pot of money that we got allocated to fix that interchange in Snoqualmie.
So my question though is that, first of all, scale on Highway eighteen is open maybe, I would say five days a month. They have been open a lot for the last month and there's been heavy emphasis out here. I'm not sure if it's just because it's that time of the year that they're doing it out here.
I can answer that.
Or there was a federal enforcement thing going on.
Let me answer a couple of questions that you've heard. We have a thing called break safety. It's a national emphasis, that's why we were open more. We made a commitment a while ago, the reason you're not seeing that facility open more is two reasons mainly. Number one, human assets are, were down, down twenty percent in my division, twenty-one or twenty-two percent in the other truck division. When we're fully staffed, that facility's open more. The other thing is, when this all started a few years ago, we made a commitment to the city of Snoqualmie that we would reduce the amount, the number of hours we were open, so we don't open before nine and we don't say open after three o'clock. So that's why you're saying it is. As far as what you were saying about trucks going westbound, you're right, they are going westbound and we're getting them at Clealum. But the fact of the matter is, they're coming eastbound out of the ports. But the fact of the matter is, they're coming eastbound out of the ports. Ports, Comport, Seattle, Joint Forces, and they're pumping container trucks out on the highway all the time. And the numbers bear it out. Million and a half trucks going past your door every single year. And that's a conservative estimate. And that's going to go higher. And right now, nobody's watching.
Hi, I'm Michael Thomas. I live in the city here at Exit 32. And I wanted to say a couple of things about the weigh station and potential parking. I think that has some positives with this aspect. And certainly, I hear the statements around increased enforcement would be great. I mean, I think that's important. And safer trucks and drivers, even more. We have enforcement, and also there's an opportunity for rest. Also, if you think about a truck that's stopped there, there's an opportunity for repair. There's a truck stopped right there where it can be repaired. And there's a place where a trucker can wait, get a room. So, that's a really good location even if there is something, something wrong with the truck. Outside here, you're planning to put in restrooms and water. Great idea. We definitely need that. I see you go a couple of downsides, and I really wanted to talk about those. There's one, I see congestion here at Exit 34 and some noise impacts. I think noise might be mitigated with concrete buffers and berms. But the congestion actually is a concern. So, really, I have really two questions. One on congestion, which is, you know, what happens when there is a backup? Will that go on bypass automatically? And the second thing is, was the trucks are already here. They're already parking along Exit 31, 32, 34. We've already got, you know, ten companies. The stop is at capacity. If we have more parking alongside the roads, would that be intrigued for parking versus alongside the roads? It's very unsafe for people that are, you know, entering or exiting on Exit 34. So, if you comment really on congestion and bypass, and if you comment about maybe the parking regulations, would we see improvements in parking enforcement really along the interstate is really what we want to talk about? Thank you.
Yeah. So, the answer to your question about bypass is yes. There's a sensor at the end of the ramp. Whenever we have a fixed facility, there's a sensor at the end of the ramp. Soon as a truck is stopped on that, every other truck hits a bypass. Kind of anecdotally, all my truck driver buddies that are in here, some of these guys are smart, so they let a couple of trucks pass and go, "Hey, if they get on the ramp, I hit the bypass." You know why you're laughing? They make the adjustment.
I've only witnessed.
Yeah, I've only seen it happen. Well, listen to me. But yes, they automatically get a bypass. The other thing is, we have, and I watch my guys do it all the time. When they notice that ramp getting jacked up, if there's an incident out on the freeway, there's a crash or any of that stuff, they turn the sign to bypass. So, everybody goes by until we either fix the problem on the freeway or we clean the ramp off. If there's a snowy vent and the road's shut down up there, we're not going to be doing truck enforcement by pulling those trucks out the road and going, "Get in here so we can wait." We're going to go out and help with chain enforcement. We're going to go out and help with parking on the roadways. And then the last thing I think you asked about was parking. You can't park on the limited access highway unless you break down. That counts everybody. Your car, there's tow-away zones all over the district in here. If you pull the truck over on the side of the road, you're probably going to get a trooper that says, "Hey, bud, you got to move."
That's what I like about the idea of enforcement, is that having WSP there hopefully will stop the hazardous parking.
Yeah, and as I said, we want to put that detachment out here. And that's, you know, depending on the size of the detachment, six to eight troopers working in this beat. Plus, my guys will have a presence of 16 commercial vehicle enforcement officers here. If we notice things happening on North Bend way, we'll take one or two of our guys out of the Scale House and put them out on North Bend way and flag those trucks in. And it doesn't take long before they get on the CV or they get on their device and they tell it, "Hey, WSP's on North Bend way. You might want to stay on the main line."
So, folks, I need a time check. We have about two minutes left, and then we have our regular city council meeting. There is an opportunity for public comment at the beginning of the city council meeting.
A sense for a show of hands and people that have a point to talk to.
Who else feel they need it, would like to comment, who has not had an opportunity? So, we just have one, two, three. Anyone else? Well, actually, can we just start a little bit?
Yeah, we just...
Yeah, let's...
Go ahead.
My question is really quick anyway. You keep talking about North Bend way and that you've got a plan for North Bend way. Well, 140th is a truck route right now. It, you know, it goes around the curve there and then it links into North Bend way. 140th is a two-lane road, and there are at least three or four major neighborhoods along 140th. A neighbor just told me...
Where is... I'm sorry to interrupt you. Where is 140th in relation to North Bend way?
The road that goes out, the road that goes out by Truck Town is, if you see it, it ends at the top. 460th into your map. If you continued on it, it would run parallel.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yeah. So, yep, yep. So, it goes basically from the Truck Town, it loops around the line and hooks into North Bend way. I've roamed that road, yeah.
Are there any plans for 140th?
The city has a plan to put around about there. Some trucks can turn around and go right back out the same way they came in.
And city ordinance bans trucks from driving on 140th, but they violate our ordinance all the time.
Violate the intersection of 460th and 140th.
Sometimes.
But it's a way down.
If they're not allowed to drive on that road. Okay, next question.
It's going to have a hard time getting me in the camera. Brian Gridley, City of North Bend, very quick question. Has there been any proposals to build additional truck parking facilities anywhere else in King County other than here in North Bend?
Yeah, not that we're aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, the state of Washington just did a trucks parking study. It was mandated by the federal government by the FAST Act. So, part of that was every state was required to look at truck parking. And surprise, surprise, there's not enough parking for trucks, including Washington State. So, one of the things we did was we offered up all of our weigh stations around the state. If we are not open and you're just looking for a place to go park and take a break, you can use our weigh stations. When you drive past a closed facility and you see trucks parked in there, that's because we told them, "Please do." Bathroom facilities is garbage. We don't get the mess that was described earlier. There is... I can tell you that the state and DOT in particular, I won't seal their thunder, but they're looking at truck parking very seriously. So, they're looking at different things like rest areas and can they expand and can they convert other properties? All that stuff is happening.
And then Councilor Costinich.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Councilor Costinich, City of North Bend, a state council member and passionate fan of the dynamic order that brings us so much access to commerce and integration. So, pardon me if you're repeating yourself, I had a prior commitment. But I'm curious on the purpose and need of this. I think there's some good questions I heard here tonight. Is the purpose and need to replace the weigh station that we're leasing? Because if so, that was clearly westbound traffic. And then the other thing, if we're actually looking not only at weigh stations but adding more parking capacity, which I've seen things like 70 stalls, how much collaboration has been done with rest areas? Because we're truly in need of better rest areas between Ellensburg and North Bend. Right now, there's one on Snoqualmie Pass that I know truck drivers, and some of them personally love it in summer, but in winter, it's not a very convenient place to get off. So, those are kind of the two questions. What's the real purpose and need for this? Is it just a weigh station replacing westbound traffic for weight? Or is it also to provide more parking spaces, which I know we need? And if so, what sort of collaboration has been done along kind of the 100-mile corridor?
So, the westbound station, what part that you missed was that was in there primarily just to weigh trucks. We don't do truck inspections there generally. Sometimes we do, but most of the time, that's for weight inspection. Because it's just not... 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago, when logs were coming out of here and coming over the pass, we were weighing those trucks to make sure before they went into the resident or to the Bellevue and into Seattle, they were compliant. The opportunity to have the weigh station eastbound is based primarily on the fact that we have a significant increase in commerce coming from the ports and from I-5 going eastbound. And we have no presence for commercial vehicles or enforcement determined. And the best way to do that, you can't do it one truck at a time. One person stops one truck. If I can screen those with weigh and motion on the freeway, keep some of them moving, pull some of them in, further screen them and dial them down to ones I need to see, that increases safety. Because the big thing we're seeing right now in terms of crash violations, the uptick right now is in equipment. So, the trucks are not in good enough shape to be on the road. We're seeing in our state, more trucks with bad equipment are moving up and down the road. We have to catch them. So, that's one point.
We have to call this meeting.
All right.
I want to say thanks to Captain Doll and Captain Alexander and Captain Lee and Senator Bull.